In recognition and honoring our growing mayor pro temp, Mr. Ramirez, I would like to delegate the authority to Mayor Pro Temp Ramirez to serve as a presiding officer of the City Council. He will be presiding over all agenda items up to item 12C, in which the authority will be regenerated to me, per finished under any attention of items. I need the consensus of the City Council, and I would like to pass the gallup to Mayor Pro Temp Ramirez. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Take your hand out. Acting Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
I'd like to start the meeting for City Council's accessory agencies, Stanton Housing Authority, Joint Regular Meeting, here in Stanton City Hall for Tuesdays at December 13th at 6:30 PM. City Attorney, any items for special report?
Mayor, Councilor, there's no court sessions, did nothing to...
Great thinking. Pledge allegiance, if you'd all rise, please. Oh, can you please, please?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal and eternal.
Moving on to item four, roll call, man portion.
Sir, Council Agency Authority Member Taylor.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Van.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Warren, Mayor Pro Temp Ramirez, Mayor Chairman Schaller.
Here. Thank you. Item five, special presentations and awards. Presentation of certificates of recognition to the 2022 Citizens Academy participants for completion of the four-week community and leadership development program.
Thank you, Mayor, members. I would like to recognize this year's Citizens Academy graduates. They participated in a number of sessions with all of our department holds our city manager, council members, other local officials, and are experts in city function now. So if you'd like, if you don't mind, I'd like to introduce them all to the City Council. If there's a few that could be... And if I call your name, if you could please come up to the front?
I'll send you to the council table, and you can also...
Yes, if you can. Be first.
Thank you. Let's start with Ken, who?
I'm just gonna stick up for this, finish your picture, dear. That's great, lady.
Rex Villarosa. Ricardo Garcia. I have Bud and Nancy Taigen. Mohammed Mahdi. Abdul Amosh. Marilyn Knox. Pauline Wen. Harry Wen. We have Mr. Dwayne Norman, who cannot join us this evening. Mike Pierce. Gary Ristrum. Donald Corret. Lan Tran. And Elizabeth Winker. Please go get a move to share a cup, okay? Perfect. Thank you so much. Ready? One, two, three. Perfect, thank you so much.
To say a few words, I just want to appreciate everybody showing up and doing your part to being a knowledgeable and well-rounded citizen for the City of Stanton. You guys are our lifeline, you guys are kind of our pension, if you will. So when we're moving on, we have opportunities to go ahead and pull from and ask if we need, so. Appreciate the awareness, appreciate the dedication that you guys have for the city. And I'm gonna be off this bench in about 10 minutes, but I'm always available. So if you guys want to call me, ask the clerk, she has my information, you can email me, you can call me. I could offer any kind of perspective that you guys may be looking for. That said, I'm gonna open up to my colleagues, Carol, any thoughts?
I'm graduated in Citizens Academy. I learned a lot. I thought it was a wonderful experience. I think everybody should go through it. That way, a lot of times, you'll be ready to get grumpy at the city going, how can they do that to us? You find out that it's not the city in Sacramento, or this is why this happens in that area. And it really makes her a happier citizen to know what's exactly going on in their city. So I hope more of you do Citizens Academy next year, and thank you for doing it this year. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Carol.
So I, like Carol, I also participated in Citizens Academy several years ago. And I am so pleased when I see all these familiar faces. I know Bud and Nancy have participated multiple times, as well as Jerry, I believe Jerry participated in either either. And so that brings me so much joy to see so many engaged residents. And that's so important, because now you guys are basically faster for our city. And I hope that you guys take this opportunity to consider being further involved in our dream. I know that next year we'll be having several commission and committee seats available. So I hope you will consider applying for those seats when they become available next year. And that you will encourage your friends, family, the neighbors, also participate in Citizens Academy next year. So thank you so much for stepping up, spending so many of your Wednesdays learning about the city. And I hope you'll continue to stay involved. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, who's virtual, your thoughts?
Fantastic, people, thank you so much for the great job. It shows your interest in the community, and really, if you're interested further from what you've learned, a lot of the commissions, the planning commission, and some of the other commissions will have openings in the near future. And if you're interested, please apply. In fact, my job will be open in four more years, so if you live in District 3, well, definitely, you can run for City Council. Thank you.
I think it's important that you realize that the foundation of the academy was to give an opportunity for you to serve in the city, but also to learn what you can do in your capacity as either a volunteer or a person on the commission. It gives strength to what we do, because if we have good people like you serving, as you go through the different levels, it will make our community stronger, our council better, and of course, knowing the staff before you get here. And to show you how effective it is, we actually have living proof here tonight. You go to the academy for a couple of weeks, and you're a City Councilman. I think it's important that you understand the value of it. And Don, we're really happy to have you on board, so thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Closing that out, let's go on to consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
And I would like to pull 6L.
6L, L is in Larry. Do we have a motion for balance?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Carol, to you, 6L.
I just thought it'd be good if we could receive an explanation of the different services that we're gonna receive from us, and why we decided to go with the county instead of individual things.
Good evening.
Good evening, all of our members of the council. So this is part of the contract city model, and the city's intent is to have multiple contractors and vendors that we are able to pull from. We have projects that we'd like to find. The county involved have a good character, and they're really important in terms of urgency work, emergency work. This is the, one of many contracts that the city will consider awarding in the upcoming year as part of a participant in California State Public Works contracting program. In January, after the council adopts the revised purchasing and contract guidelines based on, but that was provided at the last, the last meeting, public works will be issuing a call for requests for qualifications on public works, job boards, websites, advertising that any vendor or contractor interested in working with the city will have an opportunity to submit their qualifications and types of work that they, services they provide along the brief. And a lot of the city has a job that exceeds the capacity of our in-house staff, who would go out to that pool of contractors and vendors, including the county, who provide the cost, the written cost estimate required to do any work. And we would award based on best quality, best price, and best... So it's really a support system to our existing maintenance crew, which is staff at five people. Currently at four, right now, we have a vacancy, a release and promotion. And just because a contract is based on a certain contract, that doesn't guarantee that that amount of work will be awarded to any one vendor. And of course, the overriding budgetary cap on any of our contracts is set that the councils have approved and adopted. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and move.
One second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye, Father.
Moving to number seven, full appearance, we've got none. Finished business, 8A, approval of ordinance number 1124. This ordinance was introduced at the regular City Council meeting dated November 22nd, 2022. I'm gonna turn over the book.
As Mayor Pro Temp reported, this is approval ordinance number 1124. This ordinance was introduced at the regular meeting of the City Council meeting, November 22nd, 2022. And it now be the title of the ordinance, 1124. An ordinance of the City Council for City of Stanton, enbending and restating Chapter 5.77, Commercial Cannabis Services, entitled by Business Licenses and Regulations of the San Francisco Program, and am determining the ordinance to be exempt from C-Book, Safe Area, President of State, as well. The recommended act, action this evening, is that City Council adopt and crucially, the number 4, that can be staffed for, at the end of the question.
Questions from council? Nope. Can we roll call, though? Okay, motion? Second?
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schaller.
Thank you. Item 9, Business 9A, proposal ordinance enbending provisions of Chapter 5.04, and propose new Chapter 5.18 related to personal services, and propose termination of moratorium relating to specified personal services and medical office businesses, and determining the ordinance to be exempt from C-Book, and to hold over two.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, City Council members. Item 9A relates to personal care services, and are, is generally amendments being proposed to Chapter 5.04, which is business licenses, and adding a new Chapter 5.18 related to personal services. I'll back up a moment and give a little bit of history. This item originally came up earlier this year. There were some conforcement activities at a couple of day spas in the city. And it's worth kind of noting that day spas, which, you know, include waxing facials and things that are providing to customers, services providing to customers kind of in back rooms, are not regulated comprehensively like massage services, for example. And so there's a couple of police operations that discovered there were illicit activities going on there. And so the City Council put a, adopted a moratorium on those particular uses, personal care uses within the city. That was in June 2022. It was extended in July 2023, but in narrow, to really just focus on the personal care services that occur in those back rooms. So the purpose of those moratoriums was to study, to allow city staff to study the issue, analyze the issue, what city staff was able to do during that six-month period, a little bit seven-month period, was to look at other cities' codes to see how those are regulated, and what we see in today's agenda are regulations that we're proposing for the City Council to consider. So one is kind of a tightening of the business licenses. So one of the things that we want all businesses to acknowledge is that when they apply for a business license, they accept responsibility for what, for what their employees, their contractors, their agents and representatives do. So that's kind of a thing. And then the other set of the proposed changes is a new chapter related to personal care services that have backrooms where they provide private services. And it has some application requirements, so to the extent that you have those services in a backroom, you want a site plan. And then reasonable regulations, so in outright ban on, there should be no illicit activity in those premises, right? And if the City Council adopts this ordinance or introduces this as an ordinance in our first reading, we suggest that the moratorium can be terminated as of December 31st, 2022. Also, in this agenda package, it's a report that kind of describes all the steps that city staff has taken to analyzing. So with that, I will, I'm open up for questions, and I'm happy to take those. Thank you.
Any questions? Carol, any questions?
No.
Our massage parlor businesses, it goes to out of control, we have maybe, what, I think it was 55, 46, 46, okay, we're close. And once they gave that, throwing back to the city, we ended up with maybe 5 or 6. And so the reason we put this moratorium is, is we wanted to make sure that we had the correct enforcement to maintain that statute. So before I withdraw, I would just hope to get an update from my public safety.
Good evening, Mayor, Members, Council. The current status of the, and I assume you're reclaiming to be in the massage establishments in town. You are correct, it went from the upper 30s, low 40s down to nine licensed massage facilities. What has been effectively done by your City Attorney is closing the loophole on the day spas, which some of those were acting as massage parlor's. It affects the system, or both of those locations were closed and are no longer conducting that type of business. So due to the numbers that we are currently addressing, we are aiming to maintain a reasonably drastic schedule of chance inspections, where each location in the city is inspected every two months. And that's a very, very high rate compared to where we were previous.
And we did get a chance to make sure that the distance between businesses became effective, correct?
Correct. So one of the tools that we sought and then was approved by council was a distancing requirement. And once that was implemented, it has been particularly helpful in limiting the numbers of, limiting the availability of spaces that new massage establishments could establish, massage establishments could enter into. And additionally, I think it has made existing establishments realize that they do not want to lose their place and be locked down. So although there were, a couple cases came out of the day spas, those were dealt with effectively. And then with the assistance of the Sheriff's Department, once cases are handled like that, or gets out, and we feel that things have tightened up quite a bit.
And then my last question is for the interim. If we want to reinstate such an ordinance or something similar to it, I know that you have to have certain kind of public hearings and everything to get a moratorium. If we necessitated it ourselves, or we had to change it, how long would it take for us to get a moratorium to someone that's back in the place of the duty?
Mayor and council, typically, a moratorium is introduced as an emergency ordinance. We have inappropriate findings that there is an immediate health, welfare, and safety issues that necessitates that ordinance goes into effect immediately, instead of kind of this first reading, second reading, and then the 38th reading period. So we could do that almost immediately if the findings can be moved. Extending a moratorium requires public hearing and more noticing, but on the initial, we'll just put in an emergency ordinance as long as those findings can be made to take it down.
When we're doing this, will this also encompass the distancing, distancing regulations we had with the massage parlors, 500, the away from church rules, so on and so forth?
Yes, Mayor, Council, the draft ordinance actually explicitly provides that there should be a five, there is going to be a 500 separation between these type of uses from massage establishments and these type uses from similar uses. So that is explicit in the ordinance.
Pledge of the council?
All in good, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's right, roll call.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Ramirez?
Yes.
Item 8.
Wonderful, thank you. Item 10, Communications. At this time, members of the public may address the City Council's successor agency, Stanton Housing Authority, regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council's successor agency, Stanton Housing Authority, whether there be no action being taken on any of the items. Do we have any?
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, we have none.
Okay, good luck, we're gonna close. Sure, I can do that. Anyone from the public like to speak at this time? Okay, there are none, we're closing, thank you. Moving on, item 11, Representative Communications, we have none. Item 12, Mayor Chairman, Council Agency Authority Initiated Business. There are none, and we move on to 12A, Committee Reports, Council Agency Authority Announcements.
Alex, you want to talk about a tree thing you have that you had a quote? Sure. So three members of the City Council, including myself, had the pleasure of doing a Christmas tree photo shoot in front of Home Depot for our Adopt a Tree program. So I believe our city selects the members of our community to receive a free Christmas tree, as well as decorations, and a star courtesy of BPK. And so thank you so much for, a couple members of council for joining that day to take that photo shoot. And thank you so much to Home Depot, as well as the organizations that were involved in delivering the supplies for our meeting hours.
Carol?
And our city manager was there, too.
Thank you.
Well, support, thank you. About 12A, Council Agency Authority Initiated Items for Future Study.
Yes, we had talked about this in the past, but I wanted to see if you'd update, if maybe some type of a, looking at an ordinance that would allow, along the strong channels, when we have a constantly wired, barbed wire, to wire, we should get that up, and also camouflage. Where does the areas that need to be catapulted from public side? But it's very effective for the county. So some of the areas that have it are on city property of city-owned businesses. So I think we need to probably take one of them.
Wonderful. 12C, Council Agency Authority Initiated Items for Future Study Session. There are none, we move on to 12B. Swearing and seating with council members. The Orange County Register of Voters in the Stanton City Council has declared and determined that as of the results of the general municipal election held on November 8, 2022, Mr. Don, Mr. David, John Schaller was elected as mayor for a full term of four years. And Mr. Donald Torres was elected as mayor of the Stanton City Council to represent Electoral District 1 for a full term of four years. And Mr. Gary Taylor was elected as mayor of the Stanton City Council to represent Electoral District 3 for a full term of four years. I now turn to the City Clerk for the swearing and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming up this time. And so we'd like to move the gallup back over to the setting officer, the mayor. And at this time, I would like to invite our mayor, Mr. David John Schaller, to the, to the floor here. Mr. Don Torres, and Mr. Gary Taylor, we'll just have you here. And I'll hear him ready to go.
And I'll hear him ready to go. But this time, our committee will head and proceed with the mayor and Mr. Gary Taylor. And Mr. Torres will be sworn in separately by our councilmember. Mr. Schaub. Should've brought that out there. Oh, Mr. Schaub, thank you. Just so I can get in the camera view, and I have Mr. Taylor.
Hi, Gary.
Mr. Schaub, how would you like to proceed? Would you like me to repeat the oath to you or would you like me to repeat after?
I want you to repeat, I'll say okay.
Perfect. So, Mayor Schaub and councilmember Taylor, if you could please stand and raise your right hand. A little bit awkward on the moon, but. Stand for you. I, Mr. Mayor, please state your full name. Mr. Taylor, please state your full name.
Gary Thomas Taylor.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, land, and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge. I'm about to enter.
I do.
I do.
Sure. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the time, we welcome Mr. Donald Torres and councilmember Van. Councilmember Van will welcome Mr. Donald Torres this evening. How can I help you? All right, so I have the distinct pleasure of swearing the oath to Donald Torres. I'm happy to raise your right hand. I.
I.
State of the morning.
Donald Torres.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true.
That I will bear true.
Faith and allegiance.
Faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution, oh, sorry, that I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to.
Congratulations. So, Mr. Torres, we'd also like to, as part of your, your legislature district certificate of election. So, we think you are. Hey, I. Also, Mr. Torres. And Mr. Taylor, you get one as well. I'll make sure that gets to you, sir. And we also have the signatures that have also have Jeff Judy's office that has presented to you guys with a certificate of. He's going to come back soon.
It's not over till it's over.
Okay, we're at twelve B. This is recognition of our growing mayor Pro Tem Ramirez. Oh, we do have several presentations, so I think we'll have the council get to speak. We'll go ahead and introduce the representatives that are here tonight. Want to take care of that?
Yes. So, we don't have any, oh, we do, it's coming up. My Scott, don't get in Josh Newman's office. If you'd like that.
Scott, come on up, because you get to go first.
Good evening, city council. Good evening, residents of the public first. My name's Scott, I'm here from Senator Josh Newman's office. It is an honor today to present a certificate of recognition to Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez for his faithful service to the residents here as well as his partnership and collaboration with our office as we help protect the city board. If you can't come down here, first I could present this to you.
So, what we have for you tonight is proclamations from all the electeds that serve our district. You've worked with many of them, and so, they're now paying recognition to you for your accomplishments and contributions in the city, but also to the districts that you represent. So, the first one I give you is from the office of our Assemblywoman, Sharon Porter Silva. So, it says right here, on behalf of the Assembly District, I commend you for your commitment to the city of Stanton, seeing being a council member since 2012. I'm signing Sharon Porter Silva. Pleasure. All right. Number two is from our supervisor, Doug JP. And this again is a certificate of recognition from Doug JP. It says, on behalf of the Orange County Board of Supervisors, I commend you for your ten years of public service as both mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and as a council member. Thank you for your dedicated hard service, hard work and service and proving the quality of life in the citizens of Stanton. I want you to read that one.
I have the microphone.
These are Rico Bertho's hand tag that's been on the dais ever since he was a council member and mayor Pro Tem and mayor over the years. He's served in all three capacities. So, you get to be, really, you don't remember again?
Okay, Patricia, do you have the big one? Doug, is it?
I, right behind you.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, thanks. Very blessed. Rico Rugo made one request, and I think we were able to fill that. He said he wanted the flag that flew over City Hall when he first got elected ten years ago as a memorial of, remembering of his years of service to the community. So, he actually got the white flag, and he folded it to white way. And it's got your gavel when you were mayor and some pictures with us for your memory bank. In that picture, you look so much older, so that's. So, that makes you think it's gonna be fun. I don't, I don't. Anyway, on behalf of knowing our whole community, our city staff, Alice, Cheryl, Gary, myself, plus all your predecessor as some, assembly members, senators, and our former council members, we want to truly thank you for a job well done. We know that you were more than dead kids in the city. It was a very passion for you, especially our business community. I think our business community is thriving and doing a much better job because of the things you do establish over that period of time. We know that when it was tough, tough decision time, you always did what was in the best interest of our community, and I apologize for that. You know, sometimes being in your position is difficult, but it seems that you always rose your way through all the information and came up with the right answers for everyone. I think one of the things I liked best was not only were you able to communicate with our business community, but you also listened to the residents. And that was one of the characteristics I remember most about you, that you, even though you were very busy in your regular job, you still had time to know everything that was going on in the city. And so, and sometimes you surprise me when I try to catch you with a secret because you already knew about it. So, anyway, on behalf of everybody, we want to thank you for that. We hope that you put this in a place of honor in your home, and you're not very old. So, you know, there's always an opportunity for you to come back. Thank you.
So, I'm the newest member on council. And I remember my first week I'm joining council. I had the great pleasure of having a good conversation with Rico on the plane. And I remember him telling me about some of the innovative things he brought to the city. Things like talks on the block, things like revitalizing the Stanton Business Alliance and having business visits. And it made me realize, speaking to a man who's been on council quite some time and me being so new, that I wanted to have certain goals to accomplish during the short time that I have on this city council. So, Rico, thank you so much for being an inspiration and mentor, and especially showing me what is possible in our capacity as a city council member. I remember asking him, you know, what was one of the proudest moments you had on council? And I remember him saying something like, in and out. That was one of his goals, is bring in and out to Seattle. And he accomplished it. So, thank you so much for that. We will always remember the legacy that you left. And I'm sure that Donald La Merdega should still.
Could I have Joanna Ramirez come up? I asked the city this year if we could recognize the faithful and patient wives of councilmen because it's an all-family affair. It's not just about the council people. This woman has logged hours of listening to endless talks on politics in Stanton and kept a smile on her face even though I think she hardly falls asleep. And Nicola's, Rico's son, same way. Always there, always had an ear, always wanted to know what was happening. So, I'd like to have a round of applause for Rico's entire family who have all been great. I've probably been on, I've probably been on council with Dave and Rico. We've been together for ten years. And Rico can take the most complex problem you can think of and bring it down to, are we doing door number one? Are we going to do door number two? Are we going to do door number three? He has an analytical mind that can dissect those problems and make them simple to solve. And that's a rare quality in people. He's always been there for the citizens of the city. Like, he'll go and he'll sit in in and out and talk to anybody. He'll go sit in another restaurant and talk to anybody. And that's how he finds out what's going on in Stanton. And it's just been a pleasure. He's got a wonderful wit about him. And it's just been an absolute pleasure to serve with him these ten years. And he'll be sorely missed on council. So, Rico.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Gary. Thoughts, Gary?
Yes, yes. Rico, I've been on the council for four years, working with you now, and I have learned so much from you. Cheryl couldn't be more correct about your ability to synthesize issues and problems and make them very understandable for some of us that probably don't have the great brain that you do have for politics and management. So, I just want to say thank you for being a great public servant for the city of Stanton, and you will truly be missed, and thank you.
Okay, it's your turn.
Turn, wow. You don't have to say. Because you guys don't speak to my style. So, once upon a time, there was a guy who, at the time, he got Matt Wright, a fifty-six-year-old welcomed him to, to the family. At that time, the fifty-six-year-old wasn't doing very well. Was a couple of months away from bankruptcy. Neighbors looked down on him. And more importantly, just the overall vibe within the family wasn't very strong. But after a couple of meetings, I realized something. That while money was thin in this family, it was abundantly clear that strong wit, strong determination, and wisdom was abound here. And when I mean wisdom, I mean the knowledge where it intersects with a strong moral compass to do the right thing. That's what we have here. Truly amazing, right? Fast forward ten years later, Stanton is now a very vibrant sixty-six years young. According to the state of California, we're the most physically sound city of anywhere within LA and Orange County. That deserves a round of applause for everyone here. Thank you. Our image, our brand has never been stronger. We now have businesses that want to come and establish here. We have people that actually come and see this as a destination. And more importantly, we have families that actually move here because they want to raise their children here. In this journey, I've met a lot of people. I've met millionaires, billionaires, Secret Service agents, FBI agents. I've met former secretaries of state of the United States. I've met former White House chiefs of staff. And I've met other cabinet members from former presidents. And while their resumes are very, very impressive, they'll hold a candle to the culture and the people that we have here within these walls. You've always heard me say that the culture here is second to none, and I cannot say it enough. What we have here is something unbelievably special. We have people that want to work here. We have people that want to do right by the residents, by the business, and within each other. And that is hard to find. So, let's continue to cultivate that, and let's make it grow. Because that's truly one of the many foundations of why God is here today. And to the entire, entire city staff, thank you. Thank you for welcoming me. Thank you for believing in the vision and for the unbelievable execution of the plan that got us here today. So, thank you, entire staff. To council, thank you for the healthy tension. Thank you for the productive conversations. Thank you for making me wiser, a little more knowledgeable, and a lot more patient. Yeah, beauty. But don't ever forget, being on council is a contact sport. So, continue to connect with business owners. I was fortunate enough to, as mentioned earlier, to go out and visit with businesses on a monthly basis, myself and staff. Continue to do those. Do the quarterly luncheon learns. Do the annual business appreciation luncheon. That is the only way we're going to understand what our business community needs. And as they succeed, we succeed. Continue to connect with talks on the block. Our residence is the second pillar that created our success. Listen to them. Understand what they're looking for. You're going to come across two types of people when you do talks on the blocks. You have your fixers, and you have your makers. The fixers are low-hanging fruit. The fixers will tell us, fix this light, fix this crack on the sidewalk. That's an easy punch list. It's up to us to pull out the makers. Those makers are in the crowd. Those makers are the people that aren't interested in fixing stuff. that aren't interested in fixing stuff, but they want to be part of a solution going forward. They have great ideas. They are our eyes and ears. They will continue to build this going forward. So before you engage and create another five-year plan, make sure you follow these two guidelines first. And of course, continue to engage staff. But let's remember, staff does not work for us. They work with us. The same people that pay their salaries pay our salaries. Let's continue to work together. Let's be mindful of their time, and let's be respectful of their time going forward. And this is it here, guys. This needs to be motivated and driven by solutions and not by emotion. I know it's easier said than done, because we get all kinds of stuff day in and day out. But let's remember, you manage the policy and not the headlines. You don't give a handout. You lend a hand, because you want to be part of the solution. And while we can all vote one way or the other, or we all have political affiliation, that stays outside. No disrespect to the people that we have here today in Sacramento, but there's no place for that here. Sacramento does Sacramento. We do Stanton. Our residents deserve that. So be an independent thinker. Think for yourselves. Think on behalf of the residents. Do not be influenced by others' parties. That's just noise. This job at the end of the day is unbelievably simple, because if you're looking at stuff, and if it doesn't benefit the residents or the business owners, it's noise, and you can ignore it. Make it easy on yourselves. And for all the businesses that opened their doors for me over the last 10 years, thank you. Thank you for the feedback. Thank you for the collaboration. Thank you for making us what we have today. And for the thousand, I guess 1,000 and 20-something businesses that have actually opened their doors here in Stanton the last 10 years, thank you for believing in the vision. And for all the other businesses that have been here 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60-plus years, I can't thank you enough. Continue to lead. Continue to be part of the solution. You know, we already talked about the residents, right? Continue to engage them. They are our eyes and ears. It's pretty cool. I go on a morning walk, and it's not much, right? I witnesses. It's not a big walk. It's a mile and a half. But within that mile and a half, I smoke coffee. I smell laundry. I smell chalisa con huevos. And I smell Vietnamese dishes. Is it chaka or kacha, the fish?
Chaka.
Chaka, thank you. Yes. I smell that too, only because I asked. And so, a very eclectic, very eclectic community. So let's pull from those, right? Let's see what they can do to make us bigger, better, and more profitable, in a much better industry. And if I did the math, 79,000 cars pass Speech Boulevard every single day. You guys heard me, when I did this 10 years ago, it was only 72,000. So I thank every single one of those cars that pass Speech Boulevard. Why? Because they see what we're doing, and they are boosting our reputation by telling everybody else the great things that they're doing. And I also want to thank them, because from time to time, they don't always see us as a pass-through industry. They see us actually as a destination because of our parks, because of our entertainment. So that's really cool as well. And if I did the math again, I'd realize that I've missed 265 dinners. So thank you to Giovanna and Nicholas. Couldn't have done it without you guys. It was the rescheduling of birthdays, anniversaries, cutting vacations short because of the commitment we had here. So thank you. I could not have done it without you guys. I leave this office a very wealthy individual, wealthy in relationships, experiences, and for being a part of something that actually made a difference. Friends, family, thanks for so many great yesterdays. And it was an honor and a privilege to be a public servant. Thank you.
Okay, it's a cool next moment. Oh, yay. Cheryl, come on to the left side.
Oh, yeah. We're going for the camera.
We'll see, we'll hear first. We'll do one there and then we'll watch your grandma.
Okay, let's do this.
Ready?
Yep.
One, two, three. Okay. Can Gary here?
Andy's calling up this time.
Wow, this is. You may like this option.
Let's see, make sure we leave a room for his eyes out here.
I won't stand up.
You can definitely say this is the first.
It is, right?
Ready? One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, one with your family.
Yeah, your whole family should call.
Yes. Why don't we stand up straight?
You're still calling the jury.
You'll always look up to me, doesn't it?
Counsel to get in with this family.
That's good.
Carol knows my answer already.
Right?
Perfect. Ready? One, two, three. Mr. Mayor, smile. Perfect.
Did it present itself?
Yes.
That's all. That's all.
Do you want to register?
Yeah. Lovely. You can probably get Gary in as well.
One, two, three.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
Taylor, if I could, we'll do one. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you. So at this time.
Yes.
We can do that, too. If you want Pat, Mr. Delver, Torres's family to come up, if you'd like to join the thought out. I'm not sure.
That's me.
Barbara.
Quite a, quite a large family, so bear with me.
Carolina.
Sorry.
Almost there. Sorry.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Another three, please. One, two, three.
Stay right there. Stay right there. One, two, three.
So at this time, we're going to do what we call the changing of the guard. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And we won't shift everyone over this evening, but.
Don't worry, Gary. It's the only camera.
Are you supposed to welcome me to the council and to the dais?
Okay, at this time, we're going to do our annual reorganization. And so, in a moment, I'm going to go ahead and open up nominations for Mayor Pro Temp.
I'd like to nominate, uh, council member one.
Okay.
Other nomination.
Yeah.
Open the nomination.
Okay, well, I'm going to nominate Alice Ben.
I'll second that.
One nomination. I don't see what Gary's asked. Are there any other nominations for Mayor Pro Temp? None? Mr. Mayor, if you could please close the nominations.
Okay, I'll be closing nominations. And now, we are now on candidate. So at this time, that's what it.
Yes, we'll do pleasure the council. We had council member Van start, and she motioned that Mayor, the council member Warren, the Mayor Pro Temp, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you want to move along?
Okay, so.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion as a second for council member Warren to be Mayor Pro Temp. Council member Taylor? Council member Taylor for Mayor Pro Temp, Carol Warren?
No.
He said no.
He said no.
Council member Warren?
I'm voting for her.
Council member Van?
I'll vote for Carol.
Yeah, my apologies. So that was in the sales. So council, uh, Mayor Schaubert has.
Okay, well, let me, yeah, on the order. Okay, the point of order was, is that there was no second nominations for Carol Warren.
Correct.
With no second for nomination, she did not become a viable candidate. Therefore, we only have one candidate, who is Alice Ben. And so we should be going on whether or not Alice Ben is the Mayor Pro Temp.
Correct. We had a second, Mayor Torres. But yes, so let's go and move forward with him.
Okay, so right now, we're going to be going on Alice Ben as the next Mayor Pro Temp in the city of Stanton.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll move it.
Do we have a second?
I will.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Gary, nice. Mr. Mayor, congratulations.
I hate to put up with you.
We've got like two minutes left until we hear.
And then, Cheryl, you're going to be right there, right? And then Mr. Taylor, and then Mr. Torres.
Yes.
Okay, good. But. Okay, um, let me do a quick thank you as well on reorganization. So there are several committees, both at the local and this county level. I'm currently the chairman of the city's collective, maybe with county. And so all of us mayors make the decision on boards and appointments. Also, I'm going to appoint you guys to different boards. So our life is for the city clerk to give each of you a list of all the openings, which are all of them. And if you would let me know which committee you want to serve on, I will then go into consideration. We also want to make sure that this is in your schedule, and that you'll be able to represent the city in those things. So we'll get that taken care of, and we'll take care of that at our next meeting. Okay? And that being said, we will have items from the.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know I was.
Okay, and now from our, we'll be manager and secretary.
Okay.
Okay, from our state senate.
Thank you, Arnold Mayor and Council. Now I was.
Okay, and our report from my equally favorite agency, Orange County.
Good evening, Mayor. First of all, congratulations. It's been quite a night to enjoy this and be part of this, uh, of the rest of the city council this evening. So, Mayor, city council members and staff, it's my pleasure to provide the volume of safety operational report for November 2022. We had a total of 354 emergency incidents in the city during that month, of which 14 were fire. We had 322 EMS, 18 hazardous materials type calls, with a total of 354. Additionally, with our engine med squad 46 responding into the incorporated area of Orange County, there were a total of 69 calls, three which were fires, 63 EMS rescue, and three hazardous materials calls. One call to highlight is we had on November 24th, crews responded to a structure fire at 10-961, entering the Orange County Incorporated, serviced by Fire Station 46. Crews arrived on scene and found a well-involved structure fire at the vacant structure. Due to high winds in the area and amber passing of gale wind, the fire was upgraded to a second alarm with an immediate threat to exposures. The fire was isolated to the structure of Orange. The fire was placed under control with no reported surveillance of firefighter injuries. Damage determined to be approximately $200,000 to the structure, with $50,000 in its contents. Investigators did determine the cause to be arson, and one male subject was arrested in connection with the fire by those city investigators and the Orange County Sheriff. We had some community events as well with the engine medics participating in after school program and the family resource center. Additionally, participated just recently, annual Christmas tree lighting and delivery of. Misleading information right now, the UCFA is participating in a sparkle of toy drive, inspecting toys in all of our UCFA fire stations throughout the county, with our goal this year to collect 30,000 toys and deliver them to families for the holidays. Our safety message for this month is focused on home holiday safety, obviously keeping candles away from flammable objects, space heaters, and electrical fire safety with danger of clothing being serviced with many of the floods and the commercial light, one of the decorations we have in this town here. And then coming up here on December 18th, UCFA and Agent 46 will be participating again in the Santa Cyren Express. I'm sure they'll report to me that on Sunday. This concludes the Orange County Fire Department's report.
Okay, thank you for that, Chief.
You're sorry.
Any questions for UCFA? Just an announcement, we lost our chairwoman. She turned out. And we lost our vice chair because he got re-elected. So I'll be serving as the interim past, since I'm the past chair of UCFA, I'll be serving that capacity for a couple of months. So if you need anything, be sure you put me up, because it's a big job for us. Okay. I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting honoring the Ramirez family, Rico, Giovanna, and Junior. We want to thank you for all that you've done over the years. You know, it's not just council things that you've done. You've actually been very active in the community. Giovanna, I know you've worked with the women in the community, and you guys have taken so much of your time. So it's my honor to adjourn this meeting on behalf of your entire family. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and Feliz Navidad.